While I'm being present, we'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to first ask the clerk to come in and open the meeting, please.
To either of the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Tuesday, the 17th day of February next, at 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act upon the following articles. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof at the town hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereauf feel not and make due return of this warrant with your doing theron to the town clerk at the time and place of the meeting after said given under our hands this 29th day of January in the year of our law 2015. Michael J. Slight, Tim R. Roy, Troy G. Aron, two copy attest on him and constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Gainer. If you all would rise, please, and address the flag, please, please. Thank you. Tonight's, um, tonight's special town meeting will be the first opportunity that we will have to implement a new bylaw determining the order of the articles by lottery. So, we can wait and do that tonight. We have a jar over here, and the numbers in there, and I'll pick them out one at a time as we go along. Under the bylaw, it indicates that if the moderator's discretion, it can determine if two articles are related, that they should be done at the same, one right after the other. In tonight's warrant, Article 1 and Article 2 both deal with the Halifax Police Officers' contract. I think they're sufficiently related that they should be done at the same time. So, we put Article 1 in the basket, Article 2 is not in the basket. When we draw Article 1, we'll deal with that, and then immediately after that, through Article 2. So, first article. Does anybody want to guess? We're going to start with Article 6. So, Article 6 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Hanson, from the Silver Lake School Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 6 as printed.
Okay, do we have a second? Seven. Okay, we have Article 6 moved as, as in the warrant to approve the revised and increased Silver Lake District operating budget. Mrs. Hanson, it's your motion. Would you like to make a presentation?
Um, if everybody would grab a yellow sheet at the back of the room, it explains what the committee has voted to ask for. I did come up to the microphone without my sheet, so if you'd let me go back and get it. The school committee is asking for an additional $619,000 to be used out of the school district's excess and deficiency fund to address a number of security, administration, grounds, equipment, and building needs. Do you want me to go over each additional one?
So, articles, if you'd like to make whatever presentation you think is necessary.
Okay, so, under the security, there's additional indoor and outdoor cameras for both the middle school and the high school, using our existing software and server capacity for $22,000. A two-way radio system, replacing the existing middle school two-way radios and high school direct connect phones with a campus-wide digital two-way radio system that has the capability to be monitored by the Kingston Police and Fire Departments. The existing radios and connect phones that we have do not allow us to directly connect to each other, the administration, due to cellphone usage in the building. It's not the ideal situation in case of an emergency. A new keyless entry for the middle school. Right now, staff and parents have to be buzzed in. With the keyless entry, the staff would be able to have key fobs that would allow the gym teachers to get in and out of the building without having to be buzzed in. The administration, we need to replace the accounting system. It is 18-plus years old and lacks the capabilities that were expected in the computerized accounting system. The new system would allow for real-time reporter, reporting greater user access and remote entry of purchase orders. That not only affects the middle school and the high school, but all of the elementary schools in the district. OPEB funding, we would like to put $100,000 into the OPEB fund. All three towns have started to make transfers into OPEB funds. Silver Lake Regional School District is responsible for our own post-employment benefits, and we feel it's important to start as the towns have had. Grounds, repair and resurface the track. The track is approximately 10 years old. The cracks need to be repaired, and the surface needs to be resurfaced. It's a cost of $120,000. If we wait, it is going to cost $320,000 to completely redo the track. This is going to be something that we need to do approximately every 10 years. Repair and resurface the tennis courts. There's about 700 feet of cracks and approximately 36,000 square yards of court that needs to be resurfaced. The cost right now to research, repair these is $30,000. If we wait, it's going to be $270,000. The parking lot cracks need to be cleaned out and repaired. The JV baseball backstop is 18...18 years old, Tom?
We're not sure how old it is.
Okay, so, we're not quite sure of the age, but it needs to be removed and replaced. Repair the Sierra Co Field Lighting. There are eight poles out there currently. They were inspected in May of last year. They are in serious need of repair. We are asking for $20,000 to do some repairs that should extend the life of the poles for at least three years. The cost estimate to replace the poles is between $200,000 and $300,000. Equipment, one new athletic storage shed and the site work for a second shed to be built by the career and technical education students. Currently, the athletic equipment is housed in metal storage containers. It's not ideal. The students can't get to the back of the containers to get to the equipment they need, and then we swap it out for each different season for the sports, so football, soccer comes in and out and gets changed around with the spring. We would be looking to do a second shed, probably in fiscal '17, to replace the existing metal storage containers. We're looking for a new middle school storage shed, a small shed to store snow blowers, lawn mowers, fuels, et cetera outdoors. Currently, that kind of material is stored indoors in the middle school. We need additional high school furniture and additional middle school furniture to accommodate the students that we have. The high school, we are asking for 75 additional lockers. We have not had enough lockers in years. Currently, we ask all seniors not to have a locker and to sign up for one if they want one. All freshmen, sophomore, and juniors are assigned a locker. We would like the 75 additional lockers so that we could assign every student a locker. We would like to do an exterior building envelope evaluation of the high school and middle school so that we can develop a maintenance and repair plan for the envelope of the building, the roofs, you know, the mason work on the buildings. And then additionally, we're looking to resurface the carpentry and metal fabrication floors. These are the last of the original 1976 floors, and it's $40,000. We have been able to, over the years, resurface all of the other shops, and this would take care of the last two.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee voted not to recommend by a vote of 3, 0, to no abstention.
Do you want to explain your, do you want to explain your vote, or that's all?
I can explain it after this letter, if you want.
Mrs. Roy.
Okay, I'm going to make a statement on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and with the support of the Finance Committee. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I need my reading glasses. When Silver Lake and Pembroke split many years ago, as part of the separation agreement, Pembroke was to pay for the pension for some employees as well as health insurance for not only the already retired teachers, but the teachers that Silver Lake had retained during the split. Pembroke did not honor their agreement. The district then filed a lawsuit against the town of Pembroke. This lawsuit took approximately eight years to settle. In the meantime, the bills needed to be paid. In order to accomplish that, the three remaining towns knew that they would need to pay for these items on Pembroke's behalf. So, each year when paying our assessments, we knew that we were paying additional funds on Pembroke's behalf. This summer, the court determined that Pembroke should have been paying the pension and ordered Pembroke to pay the three towns back. At this point, the Silver Lake District is in possession of these funds. There is also a sizable amount of money that was put aside in case we lost this lawsuit. The total amount of money is approximately $1.9 million. It is our opinion those funds should be returned to the towns and not kept within the school budget. The funds were raised to pay for a specific reason on behalf of another town. It was paid back, and therefore, it belongs back to the three individual towns to be reallocated by its taxpayers. The Silver Lake School Committee has an account called Excess and Deficiency, or E&amp;D, as we'll refer to it as. It is essentially their reserve account. The law says that Silver Lake Regional School District may have up to 5% of the overall operating budget in this account. Right now, before the withdrawal of this article, they are close to the 5%. By spending the entire $619,000 out of E&amp;D now, it allows Silver Lake to deposit part of the Pembroke money into their E&amp;D account. Once this deposit is made, there is no legal way to force them to return the money. In fact, last Thursday, a member of the Silver Lake School Committee made a motion to do just that. It was seconded, but when the chair of the school committee, Casey Hanson from Halifax, explained that she did not feel comfortable supporting the motion until the school committee and the boards of selectmen had a meeting to discuss the Pembroke lawsuit, that she couldn't support such an, such a motion. The motion was then withdrawn. Instead, the committee voted to have a subcommittee meet with the Board of Selectmen on February 26th. That meeting will take place too late to have a true voice at the table. I feel that the three representatives that sit on the Silver Lake School Committee from the town of Halifax would like to support our position. Knowing that there are some members of the communities, the committee, from the other communities feel that the funds belong to Silver Lake, make it necessary for me not to support this article or our board. I see the merit in some of these repairs. The likelihood of some of the work being completed while the school is in session is slim. These items are not emergency items. They do not have to be done right away. By doing this now, we have lost the control of what happens to the Pembroke money. Last month, the school committee amended their 2014, 2015 budget mid-year, which forced us to have this town meeting tonight. Before doing so, they didn't check with the towns to make sure that the special town meeting would be too costly or inconvenient for the town to hold. Sure, by law, the Board of Selectmen could have chosen not to hold this meeting, but by not holding it, it would have taken the choice of these purchases out of the hands of the taxpayer and solely on the members of the Silver Lake School Committee. Our board feels that every department must seek town meeting's approval for all expenditures, and that we should hold the same standard to the school committee. So, in conclusion, I will urge you to not support this article at this time. Allow the boards of selectmen to have a meeting with the school committee on February 26th. Whatever comes of that meeting, have the school committee then bring the capital request to town meeting in May. I remind this body that there are many items on the town of Halifax's own capital plan that have not been able to be purchased due to the lack of funding. There are improvements to our very own Halifax Elementary School that need to be completed. The Pembroke money is critical in not only funding some of the improvements at Silver Lake, but some of our own capital improvements. Please give us the opportunity to have the town reimbursed by Silver Lake for the money that was gained in the lawsuit. And this statement is a unanimous vote of our Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mrs. Roy. Is there any further debate?
Hi, Robert Slager, Twin Lakes Drive. I'm a member of the Halifax School Committee, but I just want clarification. I have no affiliation with the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. I do have a question, though, and I'd like to pose it to Town Council. Who is the legal administrator of the funds received from Pembroke? Who has a legal authority to disburse that money according to the law?
We'll see if I can get you an answer. If you'd have a seat, please.
It would be the Silver Lake Regional School Committee.
So, I'd like to ask a follow-up question, if I may, and forgive me, I'm a little unclear on the intent of this article. From what I read, it is the authority of the school committee to disburse these E&amp;D funds however they, they feel appropriate. This money already exists within the school, the school budget at Silver Lake, so this isn't going to be raising any more taxes. This is money that we, that will be administered, administered by the people that we elected to those positions to, to use as they deem most appropriate. So, we're up here today being asked to defund that request because we're angry that the school committee is not distributing the Pembroke money which they're legally entitled to administer to the, to the member towns. So, I see this just as a, as a power play, really. I mean, we elected these folks to represent us, and they're choosing to use money that's already in the school budget to fund capital expenses. This whole thing, and I, I want to be as politically correct as I can, but this seems pretty strong-arm to tell the school committee, "We, in fact, are going to tell you how to spend your money, because we're going to defund you if you don't give us the money that we're not actually legally, legally entitled to get." So, if I may correct about any of these factual statements, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear, the article asks to approve Silver Lake's action, so I think that if that's not approved, that turns down their budget, just as in the other one. Mrs. Roy might have a better one?
Sure, I would be happy to answer those. So, the E&amp;D amount, the E&amp;D account can be withdrawn by the school committee, but we have, from the time that they do that, we have 45 days to hold a special town meeting to ask the town voters to vote for the appropriations. If we didn't choose to hold the town meeting, then it reaffirms the vote, and the taxpayers of Halifax didn't have a choice in the appropriation of the funds. I know you feel that, as you said, that it's about being angry. It's not about being angry. It's about having a voice at the table to talk about what happens to the Pembroke money. So, by withdrawing the money right now, it allows the part of the Pembroke money to be deposited into E&amp;D, because E&amp;D can only have 5% of the budget amount in there. So, right now, by removing that money, it allows enough space for the Pembroke money, part of the Pembroke money to be deposited. So, when we sit down with the school committee to talk about the reimbursement of that money, and it's, again, the money was raised for a purpose. The other town paid back the money that we paid on behalf of them. The taxpayers raised and appropriated that money, and, again, it's our opinion that we need to talk about getting some of that money back to our town. So, that's the intention.
I think Mr. Millis has his hand up.
Mr. Moderator.
You'd better identify yourself, please.
Tom Millis, South Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I find myself in an unusual position. I've always been a proponent of our schools, and in particular, the maintenance of our buildings, but I find myself unable to support this article. The Regional Committee made a determination to reopen the established 2014, 2015 budget to address several items which do not appear to me to be of an emergency nature, which leads me to wonder why this needed to be done now and deplete the E&amp;D account at a relatively early point in the year. Now, I really do not want to believe that this was a strategic move to capture the monies that the taxpayers of our three towns put into one account until a court action involving Pembroke was settled, but by spending out the E&amp;D account, it would position itself to do just such a thing. As I have stated, I truly do not want to believe that the committee would deliberately attempt to manipulate the taxpayers, but as I am often fond of saying, I wasn't born a cynical, and you can insert a bad word here, but I have evolved into one. If these items are intended to be addressed with the monies in question, if they have merit, they will still have merit if placed into the 2015, 2016 budget that we will debate at our annual town meeting.
Thank you. Someone over here had a hand up earlier?
Slager, again, Twin Lakes Drive. I just want some clarity on the statement that the previous speaker made when he's speaking about the school committee manipulating the taxpayer. If I heard correctly, by law, the school committee at Silver Lake is entitled to decide what happens to the Pembroke money and how they spend their E&amp;D money. That's a fact. I know folks around here would like to see that money used elsewhere, but they're not legally entitled to it. So, this is just a strong-arm tactic. Yeah, it would be great if we had some form of communication, but I don't like this end round, end runaround type of politics that I'm seeing here, where we're attacking the committee for essentially doing its job. That's what they were elected to do. I don't understand why this is even deemed to be. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Garen.
Just a question, you know, I'm really stupid when it comes to things about money, you know, I don't have much. My understanding is the Pembroke money was awarded to the three towns of Silver Lake Regional in a lawsuit, and that money is not in the ED at this time. What the school committee, in my understanding, is, would like to do is to take the money from their ED account, spend that, and then take the money from the Pembroke lawsuit settlement and put it back in the ED to bring them up to the 5.5%.
It was a motion, but it was seconded, but it wasn't voted. It was not voted because our chair, Casey Hanson, asked them not to vote it at that time. So, it has not been voted by the school committee because she understands, as the other members do, that it's important for all of us to have that discussion.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Jason Conroy, Jordan Road. Just to clarify, for the past number of years since we've split from Pembroke, we've been taking our tax dollars to pay for what Pembroke should have been paying, and we've been pumping it into this fund, basically, and saying, "Just in case Pembroke doesn't pay," and we just keep throwing money into it. And then the courts finally said to us, "No, they're responsible, so here's all your money back." And now the school just wants to take all of that. I mean, that was money we should have never had to have given to the school district. We shouldn't have ever had to pay our hard-earned money into the school district to give them that money, if I'm correct. We just did it to be safe, and now the school district goes, "Ah, we're just going to take it anyways." Maybe I'm wrong.
I would like to address that the money that Silver Lake has collected over the years has been for retiring benefits. Silver Lake and the three towns are obligated to pay that money, no matter whether Pembroke paid it back or not. When Silver Lake School Committee asked for that money, that was what the money was spent for, if not that it was being put into a fund. There was a portion of money at the time of the split that was held back, that was Pembroke's money, and that the committee held on to and said, you know, "We're holding on to this until all of these legal obligations are met." The other portion of the money came from a check, or two checks from Pembroke, two checks, from Pembroke to satisfy the rest of that obligation that they had for their health care costs. This is all retiring. There was nothing that, you know, the committee did or could have done to prevent this from happening. The committee, in good faith, went forward with the litigation to try and get the money back. The committee has not made any decisions about what's going to happen with the Pembroke settlement. The law says that at the end of this fiscal year, whatever is in excess of the budget goes into E&amp;D. If E&amp;D is certified above 5%, that money is returned to the towns in the form of a reduction to their assessments. That is what the law states. Mr. Tuckey, correct me if I'm wrong.
You have to talk to the lawyer. If you have a question, we'll find out.
Okay, and if you want to ask, as far as I understand, that is the process. Yes, I do think that we have an obligation as a committee to talk to the three towns and see where the three towns are before this money is dispersed. What we are proposing tonight doesn't have anything to do and makes no mention of the Pembroke settlement money. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee brought the Pembroke money into this, not the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
This is Lori Costa Klein, 285 South Street. As a taxpayer in the town of Halifax, and as a parent who has children in both Halifax Elementary School and a sixth grader who has everything to gain from these investments in the Silver Lake Regional Buildings, I would like to share my concerns about voting this now and approving this now. I think that regardless of whether there was a strategy and the timing of moving this to be approved before our annual town meeting, whether that is, was a strategic move or not, there is a large deficit that the town of Halifax is looking at for the 2016 budget, as I understand it. There has not been a Silver Lake budget fine-tuned yet for the school committee or for the Finance Committee that's been looked at, and I think that being fiscally conservative and aware of the constraints that the town of Halifax has at this time, it would be in our best interest to be cautious and just ask that the town has time to review this in its entirety, or that the school committee reprioritize if these projects need to happen this year. $600,000 is a lot of money to ask the town to approve without a lot of discussion, and if that's the right time to make that decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Moderator, to follow up on the previous speaker, I presented to the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the Silver Lake School Committee this previous week to let them know that the current estimated deficit is $254,000 for the upcoming fiscal year without an increase in the Silver Lake assessment, so that we have not met more than twice since January 12th because of the snow days. So, that's what we're currently looking at, and that's what the previous speaker was referring to. So, everyone should just keep that in mind.
Any further discussion?
Kim Sissoni, Pylon Circle. I just want to clarify, the Finance Committee does recommend this article?
The Finance Committee did not.
Or does not? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Paula Hanch, Ten Oak Place, and I actually am on Silver Lake School Committee. I just want to point out to folks, some of the items on this list will not be achieved because of timing reasons if we don't approve them now. You have to get bids, you have to line up contractors, and a lot of the work has to be done when the kids are not in school. And very high on that list is the CTE program build-out of the ship, so I want to point that out, as well as, you know, I thought your presentation at the school committee meeting --
Good, direct to the moderator.
-- the presentation that the Finance Committee did at the school committee meeting was very, very good, and I am sensitive, as everybody is, to the pending deficit. However, approving this does not impact that deficit. This is money that is in E and D now.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Moderator, I guess the point of this back and forth is really, if this money is not spent, the E and D money is almost fully funded, so more money would come back to the town through an assessment reduction if the money's not spent. So that's what the back and forth is all about.
Any further discussion? Okay, see no evidence of any further discussion. Just so that we're clear, a vote yes will approve the increased Silver Lake operating budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. A vote no will not approve it. With that in mind, all those in favor of Article Six, please say yes.
Yes!
All those opposed?
No!
Motion fails by unanimous vote. We move on to the next article. Okay, so the next article is Article Five. That's proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Schleif?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Schleif.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Schleif.
I move to pass over Article Five.
Great, and we have a second.
Second.
Do you have a motion, a second, and pass over Article Five? Do you want to explain your motion, Mr. Schleif?
I believe this is the second piece of property that the town is not interested in.
Okay. Any discussion on the Finance Committee's recommendation on the motion to pass over?
The Finance Committee recommends?
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on the motion to pass over? A motion to pass over will take no action. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to pass over Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next article. Next, um, next article will be Article Three. Okay, Article Three is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Schleif.
I'd like to move the Article Three as presented in the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second to approve Article Three, which is a vote to transfer, appropriate the sum of $135,469 under Chapter 79. Mr. Schleif, it's your article. Do you want to speak to it?
I'd like to defer that over to Charlie. Is that be all right?
Mr. Seelig, not being a town meeting member, however, he is the executive administrator and is authorized to speak to the board.
Bob Medor, who is the Highway Surveyor, normally would be here, but he had made an appointment weeks and weeks ago before we set this up, so we're speaking on behalf of him. Each year, we appropriate money that is allocated to us for the Chapter 90 funds for Highway Department road projects. Back last spring, the legislature had released $300 million, but the governor only allowed $200 million to be sent out to the cities and towns. So last spring, we in fact appropriated about $270,000 from the state allocation. None of our -- obviously, your tax money works only, but not funded from the local receipts. This past month, the new governor, Governor Baker, released the additional $100 million, which was undistributed to the city towns. The amount shown in the warrant is our allocation. If the town votes to approve that, then that allocation can be used to fund Halifax Highway Department road projects in the future.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends?
Finance Committee recommends. Is there any further discussion on Article Three? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article Three as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by majority. Next article? Article Four. Proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I'd like to move Article Four. That's a town vote to transfer from sale of lots and graves account to the sum of $121,250 to purchase the property designated as MAP 113 Lot 2 on the maps of the Halifax Board of Assessors, located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Franklin and Haywood Streets comprising approximately 9.7 acres, and to pay for all closing costs for the purchase of the property.
So the last section was what again?
The last section.
You said 9.7 acres and then?
And to pay for all closing costs for the purchase of the property.
Okay, so the article has been changed from what was printed in the warrant to a slight degree. Do we have a second, first of all?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to see if the town will vote to transfer from sale of lots and graves, the sum of $120,000, to purchase property designated as MAP 113 Lot 2 on the maps of Halifax Board of Assessors comprising approximately 9.7 acres and to pay any closing costs associated with it, right? That's your motion. Do you want to speak to it?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, this property became -- came to the town's attention on a 61A, which when any property that's under 61A designation becomes available to purchase and sale, the town has the first option to purchase the property. At this time, we sent out memos to the other departments to see if any other departments may be interested in this property. It came to our attention that the Highway Department or the Cemetery Departments, they're starting to run out of space up there and that they'd be interested in possibly another site for the cemetery on that piece of property. So because there was some money in that account, lots and graves, that we put it forward to you to decide whether that's a piece of property to be interested in extending the cemeteries. We've got three in town, I think. Two of them are closed and one's running out of room, so they requested this go forward.
I just want to clarify, the sum is $121,250, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so in case I misstated before, it's the sale of lots and graves, the sum of $121,250. Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends?
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article Four?
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, Mr. Anderson, yes?
I just wanted to make the town clear that this is being purchased by the lots and graves account, so this land can only be used as a cemetery.
Mr. Milles?
Mr. Moderator, can I ask through you to anyone who may know, is there the potential that the town could actually buy this lot back or this parcel back from graves and cemetery and use it for other town purposes if the money was restored back into the graves and lots account? Is that correct?
I understand your question. It is that because the motion itself doesn't say what the property will be used for, the maker of the motion, the presenter of the motion indicated that their intended use was for the cemetery purposes, and the money is being transferred from the sale of lots and graves to equally purchased price. I think Town Council?
Yeah, I can answer the question. If the funding source, if everybody can hear me, if the funding source is lots and graves, then it can only be used for cemetery purposes. To answer your question, I think that in the future, if the town did not necessarily require and wanted to, for lack of better words, reinvest or refund lots and graves, it could be used for a different purpose.
That's exactly my question. Thank you. My--
But that money would have to be appropriated, of course.
At a time.
Right.
My intent of that question, Mr. Moderator, was just to allay any fears that, you know, it absolutely has to be used as a cemetery. There is the potential, if the town needed it for something else in the future, that that was a possibility. My concern is the town owns very little available property and to, you know, know that this could potentially be used for something else if we absolutely needed it to. Thank you.
Were you speaking in favor of the article or against it?
Yes.
Clear on that point?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm in favor of this article.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Four? This is an article that -- oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, yes. Folks that may not be familiar with town meeting, it's very helpful for you to shout out, Mr. Moderator, and raise your hand at the same time, and I less likely to miss you.
Mr. Moderator, Stephanie Lipinski-McDonald from 163 Franklin Street. The town has no money, really, so why are we spending more money? That's like one question. And the second question is, why would you want to have a cemetery, another cemetery? It's like we're all mishmashed all over the place. We have four cemeteries. Why wouldn't you just keep your cemetery in one space? I mean, you know, it just doesn't look -- and plus, the people, all the people that built all these brand-new houses there, I don't think they really want to look at a cemetery. You know, and that isn't really fair to them, that they just purchase those houses and this happens. And the second thing is, if only three lots perked on that land and then the rest of them were wet, why would you want to make that a cemetery with wet?
Did you get -- say the -- come closer to the microphone. A little bit closer.
What they said is only three lots perked on that land, and the rest of it was wet. So why would you want to make a wet cemetery? You know, that doesn't make sense to me, so I would like some explanation for that. Thank you.
I think Mr. Seelig is going to try to answer your question.
On the issue of the spending of the money, the lots and graves account can only go to cemeteries. We can't use it for the school budget, police budget, or anything else. And if we don't spend the money tonight on that, it stays there. We'll use it at some point to buy more cemetery land, more than likely at some point. We don't get offers of land at this price very often. That's why we're asking the town to purchase it now. I understand, you know, we don't have any money, but that money can't be used for something else. It doesn't change, one way or the other, our situation in regards to our potential operating deficit next year. As I showed on the map that was available in the back as part of the handouts, I agree, part of that land is wet, but approximately maybe four acres of it is upland. It's not in the buffer zone. It's not in the wetlands either. I'm not suggesting we build New Orleans-style cemeteries where everybody buried above the ground in the wetlands portion, but that upland portion can't be usable as a cemetery. I understand for as many people, they would have an objection, have a cemetery across the street. I could make any number of jokes about the neighbors would be quiet, but that's up to an individual preference as who your neighbors you would like to have there in this case. Short of the zombie apocalypse coming, it's probably gonna stay that way. So that's, you know, we're planning ahead. We're trying to, you know, see the future here. We know we're gonna run out of room at the central cemetery. We don't have lots available right next door. I'm in perfect agreement. We have a very nice town center where we have many of our town departments and town services, but on the other hand, we're the undeveloped land that's appropriate. We may need to be spreading out a little bit more as the town continues through its history, and that's one of the locations that's possible. I understand if you're saying no, but we're asking for you to say yes.
Question, Mr. Schleif?
This is also an early stage of this, if this is voted, that the design that would go into this, I'm sure all the neighbors in that area would have a lot of input and a lot to say on how that cemetery would be designed if we were to move that direction. There's a lot of cemetery where there is no plaques, that they could be all flat on the ground, where you wouldn't see all the different monuments. I mean, there's a lot of design that would have to be done, and a lot of input would come from the town people in that design process.
Yes, ma'am?
Lori Costa-Klein, 285 South Street. So just, I'm gonna be consistent tonight in my lines of questioning. Just as I was concerned about rushing to make a purchase or to allow Silver Lake to make purchases, I'm concerned about the timing of this, given the deficit. I have several questions, and I'll address them to the moderator, and perhaps you can help figure out who's best to answer them. The first I would ask is, it sounds like there was a buyer already in place looking to purchase this property and build it out, which would provide tax revenue for the town when that happens. So that's a source of revenue that would be lost if this is made into a cemetery. Is that accurate?
If you have a seat, I'll get an answer to that question. The question is, was there a buyer in place, and then subsidiary to that is there a loss of revenue?
Yes, there was a buyer in place. Yes, there'd be a loss of revenue, but there'd also be an increase in expenses if we in fact allow the land to be developed for house lots. In general, residential land does not pay enough in taxes to provide the amount of services. Let's say, I think the average house right now is taxed at about over $5,000. One child in our school system costs more than that, and that doesn't include the highway, fire, police, library, you name it. So continued residential development, which is what the potential is here, would be a money loser for the town. We spend more money providing services than we would gain in additional taxes.
Thank you. My other questions are around timing. Again, I understand the time to get cookies is when cookies are passed, so if this is a good deal for the town, I can certainly understand why that would be attractive. However, what attempts have been made by the town to look for another suitable piece of property that may be more agreeable and could be purchased at a later date when we are in a different financial position?
I'm not sure. Did you ask, did someone say that this was coming out of the agricultural?
Yes, 61A.
You might want to explain that.
In turn, as Slime and Schleif pointed out, this came out Chapter 61A. The process for that is that the town has a limited amount of time to match an offer that the original buyer has proposed. So I believe we have 120 days, which is, I think sometime next month will be ending. So it's sort of a use or lose it situation. I understand the question about, you know, have we looked at other parcels? No, there's been no aggressive effort to go out and look at other parcels of land. We know in terms of residential development, we've run into situations before, in fact, where the town has declined to purchase very attractive land at even better prices than this, so we don't have these opportunities come through every once in a while, and we don't know when we're going to have those opportunities. Again, the situation with the operating deficit, and there's been a lot of discussion about that tonight and elsewhere, is that this vote won't change that operating deficit by one iota. We are going to be behind that same eight ball if we prove this or not, and I understand, you know, philosophically, that's a problem. How can we be spending money if we've got this other situation, the operating budget? But again, it won't change that at all.
So I appreciate that Mr. Seelig answering those questions. He's actually answered my next question. That being said-- That being said, I still, as a taxpayer, feel uncomfortable voting to approve this, and I just want to put that out there for the town.
That's good, thank you. Any further discussion, this ma'am?
You have to walk real close. Can you hear me okay? My name is Mari Snell, and I live at 58 Franklin Street. So I am coming to you not only as a taxpayer who agrees with what Lori Klein had to say, that I can't support this from a taxpayer perspective, but also as one of the residents that will be most, mostly affected by this, I can't approve it either. I, for myself personally, and thinking of my neighbors, we all have young families, small children, and when we bought this land and this property, we bought it knowing in mind that it will be a great place for our children to grow up, where they're going to be outside playing and be rambunctious. I personally have four very rambunctious boys, and we are on the property that will abut this. And what if it, I know this is talking from an emotional perspective, but what if my children are outside playing in the yard, or say we have a barbecue and there is a funeral going on at the same time? It's not fair to my children, but it's also not fair to those who are trying to lay to rest their loved ones, that they're not getting the reverence that they need and that they deserve. So for both reasons from a taxpayer perspective and also as a neighbor in that neighborhood, I can't accept this.
Thank you. Mr. Millis?
Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to be sure that it was clear that the money in question already exists. This is not a reason appropriate article. It is there expressly for this type of purpose. It's not a frivolous expense or purchase. It's in fact what it was intended for, and the money is there for whatever difference that makes it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jason Conroy, 21 Jordan Road. I'm a little confused. I know we put aside money and that's available funds. How much money do we have in available funds if we're running a $254,000 projected deficit next year? Is that correct?
Are you asking about available funds or lots and graves?
No, what I'm wondering is, we're appropriating money from available funds, correct?
No, we're transferring money from the lots and graves account.
Okay.
It's a separate account that you put, Mr. Seelig is going to be able to answer for yourself.
Well, I just want to clarify one thing, sorry. When we, when I put articles together, we say available funds, as in we have available funds that are other than the taxes or the local receipts, licenses, and permits or state aid. Available funds can be from any number of different sources other than that. It's a generic term that we use. When we come to town meeting like tonight, we then have to be very specific about where that available fund is from. In this case, we're talking from the sale of lots and graves account. We could be on another article at another time talking to stabilization fund, or another article from another time overlay surplus, or water receipts, or something like that. But it's a generic term until we get to town meeting. At town meeting, we have to be very specific. So for instance, in this case, it's from the sale of lots and graves account, which can only be used to work with cemetery-type projects. We cannot use that money for anything else.
So we have that money in the lots and graves account right now to buy that, and we're not going to be taking any money from anywhere else. I just want to verify that.
That's what the motion is, yes, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing no evidence thereof, because this is ultimately going to be an appropriation of, or ultimately be a sale, a purchase of land, the town meeting vote has to be by two-thirds majority in favor. So I'm going to try to see if I can do it by a voice vote. If not, we'll take a stand in town. So all those in favor of Article, Article, I'm sorry, Article Four, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose.
No.
I've been past by two-thirds. I'm going to, I'm going to say that I did not hear a two-thirds vote, so the article fails. Now we're going to the next one.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Seelig.
I'd like to ask for a standing count.
Seven, it's seven members of town meeting will challenge the moderator's vote. We can have a standing count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven. We're going to need some counters. So give us a couple minutes, send us a French. Okay, so before we can take a standing vote, I need everyone to be seated. Everybody in the back either has to step out of the hall in the back there if you'd like, or have a seat. All visitors have to be in the gallery. So if you're in the back of the hall, if you folks would either step outside or come inside and be seated, please. Thank you. Okay, so it's a two-thirds vote, and I'm going to first ask for those in favor of Article Four, which would be to transfer money from the sale of lots and graves, to stand and remain standing. All those in favor. All of those opposed to Article Four, please stand and remain standing. Of those present and voting, the total number was 100. Of that 63 voted yes, which does not equal two-thirds, the motion fails. Now move on to Article One, which is proposed by the board of selectmen.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Roy.
I moved at the town vote to transfer from line number 75 vocational education of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 12, 2014, to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2015. Oh, the amount is $27,937. Thanks, Rob. For the bargaining agreement for fiscal 2015 between the Halifax Association of Police Patrolmen and the Town of Halifax.
Second. We have a motion in the second.
Yeah, I had to add in the amount.
We have a motion in the second to transfer from line 75 vocational education of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 12, 2014, the sum of $27,947. Right?
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-seven, nine thirty-seven.
Nine thirty-seven.
Yes.
Twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for the fiscal year 2015 between Halifax Association of Police Patrolmen and the Town of Halifax, as we will be seconded. Sure, Article, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the past five years, the Town of Halifax has lost five police officers to other towns. The approximate cost for replacing them is $55,000 each. So for the past five years, the Town of Halifax has spent approximately $275,000 replacing these officers. Besides the extraordinary amount of money that it costs the taxpayers, it also takes away from the continuity of the department. A large part of a police officer's job are the relationships that they make with residents in both good and bad times. Knowing the residents, which ones need assistance, which ones can use a little guidance, and which ones need a time out spent at the station becomes very important in combating crime in Halifax. Community policing doesn't work when there isn't, when there's a constant turnover. As many of you are aware, our small town has been struggling with the drug epidemic that has been plaguing our area. Our officers are trained on the drug Narcan, which reverses the overdose of heroin. Unfortunately, our police officers have saved many lives since being trained just six months ago. We, like other surrounding towns, have had an average of one overdose per week. Developing relationships with residents they may be using an opioid is critical. Critical in keeping them healthy and critical in developing relationships that could lead to the prosecution of dealers. This is part of the community policing that can be effective. When you have constant turnover, you spend a lot of money, and you have the potential for a less effective department. The board of selectmen, in an effort to solve the constant turnover in the department, completed a salary survey among comparable towns. What we found was that when it comes to steps in salary, we were within the proper range. When it comes to health insurance, Halifax pays for 50% of the health insurance, but in many towns, the split is 75-25. The percentage of the town pays in health insurance is a non-negotiable item. Most of the comparable towns offer some sort of education incentive, some as low as $5,000 and some as high as 35% of the officer's salary. We have never had an education incentive, and it had never been an issue until now. Halifax is a civil service community for our police department, and the trend has been that the top candidates on the list have had degrees. So the last few officers that left had degrees and were able to make $10,000 to $15,000 more working in another community. The contract before you represents a 1.5% increase for last fiscal year, not the year that we're in, but last fiscal year, which is the same percentage that the town meeting approved for all other union contracts and non-union employees for the same time period. Some other items that included is a modest education incentive of between $2,500 and $5,000, for which we negotiated that the union will no longer receive overtime pay during a week in which they use a sick day. This clause is a major gain for our town. We feel that the savings recognized by not paying overtime in these instances is a large cost savings to the budget, and it affects the entire union. Again, the goal is to retain experienced police officers for the betterment of our community. We feel this is a contract that will help us retain officers, and we urge you to support this article to help us achieve this goal. Thank you.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article One.
The Finance Committee does not have a forum tonight, so we cannot give a recommendation.
So Finance Committee not having a forum, not making a recommendation, does not recommend Article One. Is there any further discussion on Article One? Yes, sir.
Hi, Jason Conroy, 21 Jordan Road. I have a two-pot question. The first is, kind of a general question is, this special town meeting was called just to deal with Article Six, is that correct?
Special town meeting?
We had to have this meeting for that.
Special town meeting was called at the discretion of the board of selectmen. They have the authority to call a town meeting whenever they think it's necessary. That may have been a driving issue, but it's, when it, once it's called, it's called, and they can put anything they want on the line.
Fair enough. My reason that I asked that question is, I mean, we've all, I don't know if anybody noticed, but we got a bunch of snow out there. And there's a lot of people, I, I had a hard time getting here today. It's just a matter of, I'm dead tired. I've been killing myself. And there's a lot of people in this town that have been doing the same thing for the past three weeks. They've been shoveling, they've been raking, they've been doing everything like that. My question is this, is we have an annual town meeting every year, where we could vote on something that is, you know, a very big thing, is a union contract for our police department, and I've been in timeout at the police station, and I've been on the receiving end of their assistance, so. I love these guys. They've done a great job in this town. I know, I know a lot of them, I've grown up in this town, you know. We've had our good days and bad days, but, and it's, I mean, I've been over backwards for them, and I've always supported pretty much everything they've ever asked for, but I think we should really shelve this, and I'm asking that we shelve this until the annual town meeting, when a better majority of the town will have a chance to be here and voice their opinions on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, can I speak to that? Yes, the board of selectmen had not intended in having a special town meeting until the issue came up at Silver Lake. And the reason why we chose to put other articles on is we were holding a special meeting. This contract was in negotiation for the last year. We had not been able to come to an agreement before the last annual town meeting, but we did come to one shortly after. And so instead of the offices waiting an additional six months, we thought it would be appropriate to bring it to the townspeople tonight. Again, the goal is to retain officers. We are spending a lot of money for really nothing gained. We are losing officers that are trained to other communities, and it's time to stop, to try to stop that trend. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If we have to keep training these people because we're losing them, why don't we put something in a contract where they have to stay for so many years before they move on? Like the city of Boston has a residency clause where they have to live in the city of Boston in order to get on their police department?
It's illegal to put it in a contract.
It's not. I'm in a, I'm in a union. You negotiate a contract with the union. It's not illegal to put it in the, in the contract.
Okay, I take your points, Mrs. Roy, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Lori Costa-Klein, 285 South Street. I'm sure you're tired of hearing from me, but I'll try to be brief. So I believe in listening to the most recent Finance Committee meeting and then hearing Mrs. Roy tonight, that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, over the past five years, we've spent around $325,000 based on over turnover within our police department. Can someone confirm the cause accurate?
It's around $275,000. So if we had put somebody in the, in the shift that stayed, then we deduct the amount that it caused. I have a breakdown of why it costs so much, if you're interested, and why does it cost so much?
I'm, I'm not. The group might be, but I'm okay with that. I, I've been critical of many of the articles brought before the town today. This is one that I actually feel the town has done a very good due diligence effort in trying to find a solution for an issue that doesn't really have a good answer, which is people always want to provide a better source of income for their family and better themselves. And we need good continuity of our law enforcement here in Halifax for several reasons. So I, as a taxpayer, think that this is an article we should approve, and I don't see that there's a gain to be, or an advantage to be gained in waiting for this to be presented at the annual town meeting, if I'm not too late to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Susan Tinkum, Paradise Lane. I happen to know that the officers that remain on the force have been working very hard and very diligently to cover the shifts from the officers that have left, so I think it's really important to help the officers that are currently there keep their jobs and remain happy.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all those, excuse me, all those in favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes by majority. Moving on now to the final article will be Article Two, proposed by the board of selectmen. Mrs. Roy?
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to transfer from line number 75 vocational education of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 12, 2014, the sum of $9,000 into the account number 899-402-583, Police Extra Detail Agency Account.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
The motion in the second to, to transfer from line 75 vocational education of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 12, 2014, the sum of $9,000 into account 899-402-583, Police Extra Detail Agency Account. Finance Committee's record, oh, I'm sorry, board of selectmen, sure, Article, can I speak to her first?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the past, the police officers who have worked private details through the town, special events, utility work, have had to wait until the town is paid by contracts to be paid events, utility work, have had to wait until the town is paid by contractors to be paid for the work that they have done. Sometimes it takes months for that money to be returned to the town from the private utility company. The town has agreed that the police officers should be paid for their work even before the town receives the check from the contractor. However, the balance in the account for which the police officers are paid cannot fall below zero. There has... there has to be money in the account in order for the officers to be paid. Contractors will not pay in advance. We agree the town can put sufficient money into the account to ensure that the balance remains positive, or wait until the accumulative sufficient administrative fee money, because the town collects 10% surcharge on a detail work, to ensure that the account balance remains positive. If Article 2 is approved, that will supply sufficient funds to do this. If it doesn't pass, then the system of paying the police office will not change until sometime in late 2015 or more, probably at sometime in 2016.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
The Finance Committee did not have a quorum to vote on this.
So Finance Committee not having a vote means that they do not recommend Article 2. Any discussion? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 2 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. I need a motion to dissolve this town meeting. Mr. Seelig?
Mr. Moderator, request for the concurrence meeting.
Yes, we have a second. We have a motion in a second to dissolve this special town meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for coming.